Well, that worked out great. Did you see the top of my head?
Can't see me at all.
I didn't like the color.
I don't either.
Obviously, we didn't turn off the camera either.
Oh, I thought I did.
Did you turn it on?
No.
Then we didn't turn that on.
The green light's not on.
Oh, it's not?
Uh-uh.
Well, then how are we on there?
I don't know. Now it's on. Are you doing that?
No.
Oh.
I'm going to get busy if you keep doing that.
That's what I did.
Does that get Roger?
You could probably... You could remove this chair. Okay, scoot down.
Well, that will get him, right?
Yeah.
But the opposite way.
Isn't that where you go, "All board members, you don't hear Marty"?
Well, he could sit down.
Yeah.
Does Marty always leave?
Did I turn that on?
You did. I don't think he knows he's doing it.
I got you down here.
It's very yellow, huh?
Huh?
Color.
Yeah, that's why I said I don't like that color. You can sit wherever you want, just straight to work around. Just trying to make sure I would get everybody in there. You sit... I don't know if you want to sit down there by Roger or you want to sit down here? Or you want to pull a chair up here? Up to you. Howard, I got your book here.
Hello, everybody. Hi, Marty. Good evening. That's a habit I got, I always forget. And I forget to turn it off.
Steve, that? They said something that we didn't... they needed to put that... Like a proposal or something? Is that what they said?
What?
The zoning, the rezoning that we did in November for the solar. Witches haven't done anything with them though.
Okay, I don't know what they said.
Oh, we got somebody.
No.
So where's the mute button?
You did it, right?
No.
You mean for the... Solar farms?
Yeah.
I think they just took that one.
I don't know, I just saw that. I thought news report. We lost anyone. The... The thing I read.
How you feeling, Bill? Any symptoms?
He's muted.
Oh, he's muted? Okay.
The camera.
Hey, how about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hi, Bill.
Hey, how's it going?
Any symptoms?
Nope, not so far.
Okay, you should be all right then.
Keeping my fingers crossed.
Okay.
Are you quarantined, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Been through it.
Yeah. I think everybody gets a turn, right?
Yeah.
I don't want mine.
Nobody else can take mine.
How's your brother-in-law doing?
Okay.
Getting better. Good.
So, the surveyor's office and the auditor's office are closed.
Just to kind of let you guys know, I went... Went, I didn't really go. Well, I talked to the group Saturday that went out to Bass Lake. They had a meeting for... For that rezoning for those two farms that we didn't approve for Swanson's and Welkers. And it sounds like they want the commissioners to go ahead and prove it. The... The people that we had that was complaining at our meeting was their one and approved at theirs. So it looks... Looks like it's all going to be rezoned to ag.
I think this will be the next couple of years that this will go on, don't you?
I don't think it's going away anytime soon.
Well, I hope the vaccination works.
Now wait a minute. Do you know who I am? Well, hit me up, Jim. Okay, all right. I'll cut you some slack there.
Okay.
You've got one of those free cards out here. I didn't realize what his only he was, that's why I said that before.
Are those masks that you're wearing?
That's why I said that.
Pretty easy to breathe through.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Everybody, you know? So I learned a lesson.
I've got one in Papho. That one, but I've never with brand new in the box. I've never wore it yet. Thank you, Derek.
It's hard to knock off your fingers.
Yeah, it is. That's, yeah, very much so. Especially like when you're counting money too. Well, and I have checks all day long.
Yeah.
Yeah. Famous check, you know? Yeah.
You're steaming.
Kevin's not going to show up.
He said he was.
What did he say? What that from? What part? I'm sorry, did I say that?
You weren't there.
I apologize.
I said he was coming too, so, Lori. Call everybody.
Mary, we're going to have enough for... at the PCA?
Supposed to.
Because I saw Sac Binkley's not coming.
I called Mark, he said he's coming, and I called Bob, and he said he's coming, and Denise is here already, so...
Hey, good evening.
How are you?
How's it going? How are you, Donald?
No.
Good.
I'll write them on here.
Mary, good to see you.
See you too.
And Ping-ha.
Yep, how are you?
Good, thank you. No, not no more. Since he's on the council, he can't be on this.
Oh, okay.
So they have to appoint another one.
Okay.
And then with that.
Everything good?
Yeah, busy.
Are you?
He goes here.
Should we give Kavender a little more time? Should I know?
It's 5:30, it has started, I guess.
That's what I'd say. I'd say, if he knows what time it starts, so.
Okay, it's all ready. Senseless, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roger Jacobson?
I'm here.
Denise Poltai's here. Todd Jackson?
Yes.
So Lori?
Yeah.
Todd Lauren?
Here.
Howard Bailey?
Here.
Bill Kreis?
Here.
Kavender not here? I'm here? Marty?
Here.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes from the November 17, 2020 meeting? Are there any additions, corrections, deletions, or anything on those minutes? Hearing none? I take the motion to approve the minutes as they are, please.
I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second, please? Okay, motion's made, and second, all approval say aye?
Aye.
All is the same? Thank you. Next, we got the appointments. President. Who wants to be president?
I nominate Roger Jacobson.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none? Looks like I'm stuck. Vice President.
I nominate Bill Kreis as Vice President of the Planning Commission.
Any other... Go ahead.
I second.
Okay, any other nominations on that? You're stuck there, Mr. Bill.
No problem.
One we're coming to is Administrative Building Commissioner. As you all know, we've had a little bit of a problem, okay? And before, we wanted to take the administrator back in the summer and make Pam the administrator. And the building commissioner, I want to separate that out. Just advertise for a new building commissioner. So that... because we appoint him, I want to advertise for it, and probably, what, two-week advertisement? Should be?
Yeah, I think it'll have to be two weeks, Roger.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure. So, let's advertise that. We're not going to appoint anybody to the building commissioner tonight. If everybody agrees with it. And I want to make the administrator clerk being Pam. Okay? So, if I could get a motion for that?
I think you probably... You probably should take nominations for the building commissioner.
I'm sorry.
If nobody...
Administrator, nominations for administrator? I'm sorry, yes. Let's take a nomination for administrator clerk together or separately. How are you still?
I'm not sure. Would the commissioners have to change that job description?
I have no idea. Do you know about?
Well, we can do it, and then check with Marty Lucas's whether it's...
See if we had a commissioner here that could give us an answer on how he would vote that. But let's just... Let's just put administrator clerk.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And make a motion to do that. Okay? And...
Set the job title be administrator clerk?
Yes. And nominations for administrator clerk?
I nominate Pamela Starkey.
And I will second that.
Any other nominations for that? Hearing none, all in favor of Pamela Starkey?
Aye.
Okay, now, building commissioner.
We're going to have... Well, no, you probably should take... If there's anybody that has a nomination, if there's no nomination, then you...
Advertise.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody, a nomination for building commissioner? Nobody? Anybody got anybody that they know of? Okay, hearing none? Then we'll have a motion, have to have a motion advertise it out?
Yeah.
I'd like to have somebody make a motion to advertise for building commissioner.
I will make that motion to advertise for the building commissioner.
Could I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. So now, we move down to planning commissioner council. Mr. Marty Bedrock.
I nominate that we retain Marty Bedrock as our planning commission counsel.
Could I have a second on it?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Start counting, development board. Bill had talked to me about that a little bit, and that's kind of... This board is kind of like sitting on a Knox board over there. It's a... You don't do nothing situation. And they only tell you what they want you to know. So...
The commissioners are reviewing the contract.
Right.
What's it, like, meeting-wise and days and, like, volume on?
Well, the... The board, right now, consists of 20 people or more, which has to be cut down. That meeting usually takes place on Mondays about 4:30-ish, somewhere in there. And you get together, and you really never go over a whole lot of information because anything that's coming or going far as development is kept in-house for the executive board. I mean, the only work I've ever really done on that board in the four years has been on the building sites committee, which is good because that's, you know, pretty much, once they get a project, then you're involved with getting things laid out and making sure that everything's followed. I don't mind that as bad, but us being on the regular board, I don't see... I don't see a reason for us to be there. I personally don't want to do it again. If one of you guys would like to give that a shot and sit on the regular board, that's up to you guys. But I would be willing to do the building sites, which is a meeting that's 8:30 in the morning on Mondays every other month. And, you know, I'd be willing to do that part, but I don't want to sit on the board of directors.
So... Nomination for the...
That's the way it's been for years and years and years. They don't tell you anything.
How often do they meet then? Just once a month?
Every other month.
Oh. I got a Monday about 4:30 in the afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah.
More falls on this Monday than... So they don't meet here? No.
No, they... They meet at the Development Foundation building over there by Kristos.
Does a conflict with our Monday term with the planning commission?
No.
Okay. So it's not the second Tuesday or second Monday?
I mean, Denise, if you want to give it a try, I mean, I'm more...
My work's scheduled to get me here by 4:30, it's going to push it.
Oh, okay.
But I work till 4 o'clock.
Yeah.
And isn't it just a one-year term?
Yeah, it's a one-year term.
You thinking?
I'm thinking.
You have 30 seconds.
I can do it for a year, I mean, every month or a year, that's only six times.
And if you do a couple of times, and you get same feeling, Bill's got it, you go to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I could do the building site stuff that's during the mornings. So we could split it up.
Do you really think that, I mean, are you still thinking that we really wouldn't need to have anybody there? Or have anyone up with them? They want somebody else on the board, I'm saying.
I think they want somebody there, but you're there as well.
Bobby.
A Bobby, you ask it. You know?
I mean, I'm willing to try it if no one else wants to do it.
Anybody else want to jump on it? Don't all jump in there at once, babe? Okay. Let's... Somebody nominate Denise, please.
I'd like to nominate Denise for the Development Foundation Board.
Okay. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All is the same, thank you. Tech Committee. Want to keep that the same as it was? Okay. We'll just keep tech committee the same as it was. Okay, next. Any new or old business? Other than you've been, you know, new businesses, you've been giving a couple, three pieces of paper on what happened in the office and what's been happening so that... Why we're making this thing?
Don't we have to appoint somebody to Bobby's job?
Pardon?
Bobby's job?
Does she have to be appointed, Bobby's?
Oh, I don't... I don't know.
I don't... We did it last year, I don't think. No.
No.
She's... It's not an appointed position, she's just a part-time worker for the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay. So... All the new and old violations you got, that was in your reports? Anything, what unfortunate report officer, she not here? Any public comments, Kay, you don't have nothing to say, good?
Well, I wanted to bring something up because...
Marty?
Because Matt Fisher came up, and I talked with Bill about this. And Pam was gone, okay? And this lady came in my office to... For me to prepare some deeds. And I went to the auditor's office and checked on it, and they said, "Well, she had subdivided her property within the past 12... 12 months," she said at that time, "so she couldn't do it again." Now, Mary and I then discussed it, and there's... She got hold of Pam, and that... That particular section for subdivision was amended back in 2007. 24 months. And I'll read it, that you wouldn't have this co-section in front of you, but it says that you... Well, it's not... Anyway. "Any land vacant or improved which is divided or proposed to be divided into three or more lots, parcels, sites, and whatever," and it talks about 12 months, okay? Now... So... The auditor's office told me 12 months, so I thought I could do one... One deed because it had been 12 months, but then Pam said 24 months. So couldn't do it. But the lady comes back to me and presents me with this. I don't know if you all can see it, but this was surveyed and subdivided or put it into separate lots back in 2007 and was recorded. Okay? So to me, after she shows me this, I have separate legal descriptions and whatever, everything's okay. So I prepared the deeds. So, and then afterwards, Pam tells me that even though she did this, she has to do separate deeds, right? And deed each lot to her. I didn't know that. And I... I... And I'm not even sure why we... Someone needs to do that. So I talked to Bill, and Bill wasn't aware of it. You know, this was the first time that something like this had been presented to him. So... I went ahead and recorded the deeds because I didn't know anything was wrong. I'm sorry.
You recorded each one separate or created one?
Two deeds, yeah. Yeah. For separate, each separate parcel. So, if that's wrong, I'm sorry, but it's probably something we should look at. Why do... Why do we want to wait 24 months to allow somebody to subdivide? Divide, like, if I own 10 acres and I want to sell three, and then the following year sell three again, why wouldn't we want that?
It would be subdivision. You would have to follow subdivision bagway.
Well, that's what... Then something that doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, back in 2007, I went here, I don't know what happened, and most of...
I don't agree with the 24 months.
Yeah.
The 12 months would be sufficient, but when you divide it off like that, that's a subdivision. And you need to do subdivision, you have to follow the checklist for the subdivision. You got, like, your drainage or your retention ponds, your... Right, Phil?
Well, it's not really, she just... She just made them into separate lots.
I know, but that's a subdivision. More than one is a subdivision.
That would... The way that's designed, that would be like a subdivision.
That would be a subdivision.
Well, we'll see, that's where it gets confusing because they call subdivision, like, you see these planned development, developed areas, and just dividing a parcel into two pieces is a subdivision too. So it gets a little confusing. But this is all she did, at least I believe. She didn't intend to create a planned development. She just intended to divide her 10 acres or whatever into separate lots, and that's all, and sell them individually, so...
When they call and ask to... Because I... We have people that have 40 acres, they want to sell off their lot. Anything less than 10 acres, you can only divide once every 24 months. 10 acres or more, you can divide as many times as you want. Otherwise, it's a subdivision.
Boy, I know, I... That's where it could... You're just dividing the parcel into two parcels or three parcels or whatever.
When you just divide it in half, that's...
Well, see, we're using bad terms. Okay? The subdivision is a planned development, okay? And then we also call dividing a five-acre parcel into two parcels a subdivision, and that's where it gets a little confusing. This is not... This is not a planned development, as far as I can determine from...
But shouldn't it be if there's that many lots?
No, I mean, uh... I don't know. I mean, that's something for us...
Good point, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, like... But, like, that's 10 acres?
I think it started as 10 acres.
10 acres, then she's divided it now into three...
Seven lots.
Seven different lots.
Yeah.
With intention to sell them off?
Individually.
Individually.
So I mean, it's not like it's just divided for her sake.
Right.
No, and I mean, she...
I mean, her intention is obviously to sell them off for those profits that somebody can build on.
Yeah.
Which would be a subdivision.
Yeah, it would be a subdivision.
That'd be... That would be a subdivision.
Plan development.
It all has road frontage, doesn't it, guys? It's not like you got to build a road to go into it to subdivide it, correct? It all has road frontage.
Okay, each one's stepping on a road.
Yeah.
That's... There's no cul-de-sac or nothing needs to go into it.
No.
Each one's got a separate entrance into it. It would fit a subdivision, but then again, when you go that other way, it fits just divided up into separate lots.
Really? Generally, the subdivision... Subdivision ordinance, a planned development has requirements for streets, sidewalks, and whatever. And I don't think that... And this particular... And I don't think that, in this particular case, that she had any intent to do that. I mean, I, I can just guess that from the, this, the way it was recorded. So, I mean, it's.
Cause a subdivision would have to have easement, utility easements, roads, cul-de-sac, storm drainage, retention, and quite a few things in your subdivision line. With that all having its own road, road frontage, I'm not sure that it qualifies as a subdivision. But I got a recommendation, what I was thinking, I don't know if somebody wants to do it or not, or I can give them a call, but I wanted to call down to AIC under the Planning Commission Administration part down there and ask them information on it. They're the ones that works with your legislative body, making the laws and so forth for all this, and see if we couldn't get a answer like we did last time, so we could actually find out what this should be.
That'd be a good idea, if you want to do that.
I mean, it's up to what the group thinks, I, I'm not trying to steer the whole.
No.
Certain direction, but I honestly don't know, because this is the first time it's came in front of me, so I was gonna call them and get a ruling on it.
From my point of view, where she presented me with this picture of this being recorded, and I see it's separate lots with separate legal descriptions for a flat, I assume it's, okay?
Yeah.
Cause I've never encountered this before either.
Never been brought up before.
No.
What do you guys think? Let's go check into it, see what we can find, find out about it? Yeah. We need a motion, let Bill check in, or just let him check it?
Well, I.
You know, you check into that for it, Bill?
Yeah.
You got anything else there, Marty?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Does anybody have anything else for the? Hearing nothing, I'll take a motion to dismiss the meeting.
Make a motion that we.
Have a second, please?
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Hey, Pam? Pam?
Yeah.
Hey, did we have any other participants on Zoom other than me?
Nope.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, guys.